Let the minutes reflect the adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. At the regular meeting of the board held on June 10th, 2021, the board adopted this meeting. On, sorry, on June 11th, a copy of the schedule of this meeting was posted at the bulletin board at the main entrance of the Hartley Dodge Memorial, was sent to Madison Eagle and the Daily Record and filed with the Borough Clerk, all in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act. In response to public safety considerations and legal authorization, the Board of Adjustment began conducting its monthly meetings remotely using the Zoom platform. And subsequently, separate notices have been published each month advertising of this change and indicating that the procedures and requirements for monitoring such meetings and for making public comment along with any explanation of the audio muting function of the electronic communications platform being utilized is provided with detailed information on how to use Zoom and participate found on the RoseNet webpage.
Thank you. May I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Dianio?
Here.
Mrs. Driscoll?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Dr. Paceal?
Here.
Ms. Salvo?
Here.
Mr. Santoro?
Here.
Ms. Tarritelli?
Here.
And Mr. Foster and Ms. Carr are recused from this meeting this evening.
Okay, very good. Do you have the flag there?
I'm ready.
Okay, well, all right. So would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Excellent. Thank you. All right, so we don't have minutes for approval yet for June 10th, correct?
No, I'm sorry. They were not ready yet.
Okay, so we'll just carry that for the next meeting. So there's no resolutions for memorialization for us to deal with tonight. So is there any scheduling or procedural matter he should talk about, Gary?
I don't think so. The next meeting is in two weeks and we will not get through the agenda. It's pretty obvious, but I think we'll, I don't know, see where we are. And there is one, one site plan application waiting in the wings. The Starbucks Coffee, they're moving across the road to the old bank building in the shopping center. They renovated at a big drive-through and so that'll, you know. Hopefully that won't be controversial. We'll find out, but it is a site plan. So just the, just the, the site plan minutia details could take some time, but we'll deal with that when, when we get to it.
Okay, great.
I think for now, we'll just see how far we get on the regular July meeting and go from there. I mean, it's with vacations, I don't know that we're positioned to schedule special meetings, but we'll see where we are.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I will tell the board and Mr. Chairman that I will be away for the August meeting.
Okay, so noted. Thank you very much.
We could do, talk about a workaround or whatever.
Thank you for letting us know that. Okay, so let's move to old business. So this is case number Z20-018, Madison Movie Development LLC. So I think this is the seventh meeting we've had on this. And at this meeting, we're going to discuss, we're here closing statements from, from the attorneys and then move to deliberation and hopefully to a vote. We covered public comment in the last meeting that we had on June 10th, so that's out of the way. Does that sound good to everybody?
Very good.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, so is it customary for the applicant to go last or what's, what's the right protocol?
I would suggest so, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Simon, would you like to make a closing statement, please?
I would.
And by the way, is try and keep it fairly brief. We've, you know, had seven meetings, so let's not go too long, please.
Yeah, well, I think that, first of all, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. And I, I will, you know, certainly be comprehensive because there was a lot of material over the course of the meetings. But in any event, I certainly thank the board and its professionals for your attention and courtesies throughout this matter. So, you know, I'm going to start out by saying that despite working with a fully conforming, which is now vacant, Lot 24, the applicant, we believe inappropriately, is requesting extensive relief from this board, including multiple use variances, I think seven bulk variances, 10 design exceptions, RSIS relief in terms of parking spaces. You know, this is not just any property in the CBD one zone. It's an important building, I mean, property. It was an important building for sure with the, with the movie theater. And it's, but it remains an important downtown parcel that is conforming in size pursuant to the CBD one zone, located directly across the street from the train station and next door to the post office. And its location, as we know, is part of the gateway to the commercial core of the community. And it's a property certainly with cultural and historic significance. And as you know, located within the historic district. And in the CBD one zone where the property is located, the, the goal as stated in the ordinance as well as the master plan is to have the highest concentration of commercial activity within that zone. And of course, while other zones may host commercial activity, the CBD one zone is the commercial core for the borough. And of course, correspondingly, the zoning ordinance, when it talks about the CBD one zone, it contemplates having these commercial uses, including having ground for stores or offices with residential on the upper floors. And, you know, that's all consistent with the purpose statement that is set forth in the ordinance. And it also, you know, certainly as this board is aware, that prior to adoption of any zoning ordinance, such as that one, that the ordinance gets referred to the Planning Board for Consistency Review pursuant to Section 26 Municipal Land Use Law to make sure it is consistent with the master plan, which it was determined to be. And that zoning ordinance also permits, as we know, up to three stories in, in height. And, you know, this translates for this project in particular into a mixed-use scenario whereby the ground floor or one-third of the floor area is, is supposed to be commercial and the remaining two-thirds on the upper floors can be cited for residential use. So in this case, for the required use variance, roughly 70% of the building's usable floor area devoted to apartment use is not over any store or offices required by the zoning ordinance. And with the unique development opportunity here for a brand-new, meaningful ground-floor retail located directly across from the train station, we believe that that space should be appropriately sized, but instead, the applicant proposes 6% of the floor area is what we believe to be nothing more than token retail and 94% of the floor area as residential. And we believe that is all at the expense of proper planning for a downtown that will, of course, be inconsistent with the Madison master plan, the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance and the applicable provisions of the Madison Site Plan Ordinance. No way is this property particularly suited to the proposed 6% of the floor area devoted to retail use, especially given its location in the CBD one zone across from the train station and next door to the post office. So what we have here is a development that is proposing a density equivalent of 90 units per acre, of course, blowing by the 30 units per acre maximum density permitted by the ordinance, by the ordinance in Madison, which is only permitted in one of Madison zoning districts and it's not the CBD one zone. We have a situation here where six of the 24 residential units or 25% of the residential component of the project are located on the prohibited first floor of the building. We also have at least 4,500 square feet of the proposed building floor area. I'm not including the mezzanine areas. All of it comprised of residential and none of it over commercial space. And that property, that portion, at least 4,500 square feet, impermissibly encroaches on the required 25-foot rear yard setback area, which as we know, butts a residential use for approximately eight households. So the, we believe that the property's location demands full realization of commercial capacity in accordance with the ordinance. While on the other hand, the proposed project effectively eliminates any meaningful opportunity for commercial utilization. And instead, what we're left with and poised to get is a nearly 100% residential project. Now, there's been no evidence of market demand as part of these hearings, these seven hearings, as the chairman stated, for these very small and what we deem to be inconsequential retail spaces at juxtaposed with such a consequential downtown location across from the historic train station. There's no proof that the proposed small commercial spaces on the first floor are at all viable. And frankly, with a large vacant parcel, there's lots of opportunities that have not been investigated to promote first-floor retail to be patronized by downtown folks, patrons, including the many that utilize the, the Madison train station. And, you know, parenthetically, if the applicant complied with the 25-foot setback requirement in the rear, the building would not be so deep, but rather it would arguably be appropriately proportioned, at least for first-floor retail and office use, as is specifically intended by the ordinance and the master plan. We all know, we all shop, commercial spaces come in all sizes, shapes and configurations. Just because a lot is slightly larger than the zone standard, and I remind you that just because a lot size exceeds a minimum requirement, that is not necessarily the lot size that is quote-unquote desired by the governing body in the zone. It's just a minimum, not necessarily preferred. And it also doesn't mean, just because the lot here is slightly larger than the zone standard, it doesn't mean that it's unusable for retail and/or offices on the first floor in today's commercial market. So we have the proposed use and then we couple it with the bulk mass and overall size of the proposed building. And what we get, in our humble opinion, is a very dangerous precedent for the borough and this board, especially given the height, rear yard setback and coverage variances requested by the developer on a compliant lot. The building's going to look completely out of place on the street as traveling in either direction along Lincoln Place, even as compared to the buildings on the train station property with similar height. And, you know, we've talked a little bit through the course of the hearings and we heard a little bit from the Historic Preservation Commission representative. But as the board is aware, in correspondence, as late as January of this year with regard to this project, the HPC commented as to the proposed building. And what they said was that the reduction from four stories to three, originally it was before the HPC for four stories, and now the building, as alleged by the applicant, is a three-story building. The HPC said that that reduction does not significantly change the overall height from the initial proposal reviewed by the HPC. And more importantly, it retains the bulky massing of the building. And it goes on to state that the proposed massing of the new building extending across the full size of the lot to its full height will have a detrimental effect on the streetscape view and the sense of openness and arrival, I think it said arrival, at this location. They, they went on to talk about the window heights, that they're much larger than nearby buildings and that along the visible side elevations, the traditional pattern of putting smaller windows on upper stories is reversed for this proposal with double-height windows from the mezzanine, for the mezzanine apartments. And this is according to the HPC, not according to us or Mr. Pasolano. According to the HPC, a very clear industrial aesthetic to this building. And while loft housing made by converting former factories to residences may be very popular in urban areas, this mechanism does not reflect the building type or history that is representative of Madison or the, the subject property or the subject historic district. And even as Mr. Kellogg stated at the last hearing, this is the wrong building in the wrong place. It's a new structure that only violates, not only violates the CBD one height limitation pursuant to the terms and definitions found in your ordinance, but it will have the appearance of a four-story structure, again, where a maximum of three stories is permitted. And while we believe that the applicant focuses height analysis on the front view, it provided minimal focus on the mass of the proposed building, which will appear to be the equivalent of five stories at the rear lot line. Plus, we're talking about a 25-foot rear yard setback deviation for multiple building floors so that the actual mass of the building is going to be closer to that rear property line than what is permitted by ordinance. Now, while the former theater structure was there at a somewhat similar scale setback though from Lincoln Place, that movie theater has now been demolished. Yet, there has been no attempt to improve upon what will be an extreme contrast between the subject building and nearby properties, including this two-story residential use to the immediate rear, literally in the shadow of this, of this larger building. And keep in mind, it was the applicant who purchased the building approximately four years ago and who let the movie theater remain vacant and the alleged quote-unquote eyesore after acquiring the property. Now, it's been demolished. And the alleged eyesore has been removed. So at this point, there certainly are no aesthetic benefits to be gained by granting the applicant the extensive variance and exception relief sought by way of this application. There's no rational planning reason to be rebuilding at a non-conforming height, a substantially non-conforming setback and substantially non-conforming amount of impervious coverage. Almost all the buildings downtown Madison, as shown by the applicant's architect, those that are 42 feet in height or greater, according to his testimony, most are not even located in the CBD one zone. And there was no testimony as to how many of them are pre-existing non-conforming structures that are allowed to remain via the Municipal Land Use Law and local ordinance. But if you look closely at the Architect's Exhibit and it's entitled, I think, like Height of Buildings in Downtown Madison, what it does show is something that's quite striking. It shows that the proposed building with its height, with its size, with its mass, will stick out as the absolutely largest in square footage and size as compared to any other existing building in the downtown with the exception of the historic Hartley Dodge Building, but which is located, of course, within a completely different view shed than the view shed of the, of the subject property. Now, moving on as to the, the driveway easement modifications that are being proposed by the applicant. They trigger, as you heard testimony and my legal argument, Mr. Pasolano, we believe that they trigger for the reasons stated, multiple use variances. And they contemplate for the very first time land from Lot 24 to be used as part of the driveway easement. But even with that addition, it still results in a 33% deficient driveway width. And no information has been provided by the applicant, who of course, has the burden of proof here as to the historic, as to the existing, as to the proposed use of the driveway easement by any of the lots in question, whether it's Lot 11, Lot 12, Lot 22, Lot 23 or Lot 24 and their related uses. You know, what are those uses? What traffic demand is associated with those uses? Who are even the users of those lots and those buildings on the lots? And we have no information as to related volume circulation and traffic impacts, which, which we believe are important to consider, especially given the fact that you're talking about a driveway easement that is to be used or contemplated to be used by multiple properties across the street from a train station with its everyday drop-offs and pickups, certainly post-pandemic. You know, there's been no information even as to who's parking, who's currently parking on or using lots 11, 22 and 23, especially once the mechanical gate on Lot 23 is installed as proposed by this, in furtherance of this application. There's no reason why a somewhat smaller and less bulky building could not be designed so to allow for a proper driveway width, especially given the number of lots and users that may have rights to use the driveway. Also, we're talking about deficient site distance on, looking on to the east or west, onto Lincoln Place. And also, again, the impacts from the train station traffic. Certainly a smaller number of residential units here would also be a better fit by reducing the magnitude of the RSIS parking deficiency. There's been no evidence even as to how renters with more than one car, which they of course will have, or overnight guests will have overnight parking spaces available to them. With regard to the affordable housing component of this application, not in, and this board will make its own determination, but notwithstanding what my colleague, Mr. Wolfson stated, I believe even at the last hearing. We, my understanding is that this application was submitted and deemed incomplete as of October 12th, 2020, and that the resubmission was dated November 30th, 2020. And that the Borough Code as pertains to affordable housing was amended on September 14th, 2020, requiring a 20% mandatory affordable housing set aside. So I don't believe that the time of application rule forecloses the fact, or the obligation to provide the additional affordable housing unit that has not been provided, making it five. You know, we also, you know, certainly take issue as to why three of the four COA units are located on the first floor. It's a three-bedroom COA unit next to a dumpster. Why is one of the two-bedroom COA units next to the lobby and the other one next to the retail space and they're all facing the post office with delivery trucks? Why is a two-bedroom COA unit, you know, 850 square feet and a market rate 950 square feet? You know, certainly the COA units should be properly integrated into the development on the upper floors where they're permitted by ordinance without violating the rear yard setback requirement. And there's no reason why they cannot be. So let's then circle, come full circle in essence with regard to the, the use variance standards that the applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate for variant, for, for that relief, including the applicable Medici standards. As this board is aware, as a Board of Adjustment for use variance, approval of this use variance application, what does it mean? It means that this board's going to find, because it needs to find under the law, strict adherence to the zoning requirements would be less beneficial to the general welfare than what is being proposed by this project. And we believe that no, there is no way that this project, with all of its ordinance violations and based on the proofs that have been submitted, provides more benefit to the community than constructing a fully conforming project. Keep in mind that the special reasons given in testimony by, by Mr. Phillips in support of this application, of course, similarly accrue to a conforming use. And there's certainly no need to have first-floor residential use on this property across from a train station and next door to a federal post office. This site is not particularly suitable for the proposed use, especially due to its location in the core of the commercial downtown where intensive multifamily use, let alone that on the first floor, is not encouraged. In contrast, there's multiple reasons why it is a desirable and highly appropriate location for the fullest allowable extent of commercial utilization under the CBD or Central Business District one zone. Going to the negative criteria, the project, of course, presents numerous substantial detriment to the public goods surrounding neighborhood, including displacing valuable economic development potential at a key commercial development location in the borough's commercial core. The proposed building is going to, we believe, overwhelm and tower over surrounding properties. And you can look at the, the renderings and I think they speak for themselves. And it's going to result in a building mass and square footage that is going to dominate other neighboring properties in the CBD one zone. We believe that the use variance sought by the applicant is totally inconsistent with the intent and the purpose of the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And it cannot meet the enhanced quality of proof required for approval of this application. Or in other words, one cannot reconcile the proposed use variance with the zoning ordinance permitting, prohibiting, excuse me, prohibiting the use that is being proposed here. Now, the applicant stated that the enhanced quality of proof is satisfied by changed conditions in the retail environment. Now, of course, that was only anecdotal evidence as provided by the, by the applicant's planner who respectfully, just simply made generalized statements about a trend towards smaller spaces being desirable and a cursory look at the depth of retail spaces within the, the borough without any substantiation by studies, reports and corresponding testimony. The, the important consideration is that the governing body considered the desired locations for multifamily uses as recently as 2020. And when it amended regulations, including relating to the CBD zone and, and the master plan was amended, it shows the, the Planning Board and the governing body chose not to encourage more residential development in the form of multifamily use in the CBD one zone. Very recently, 2020, a clear recent desire to have the ground floors in the CBD one zone fully occupied by commercial uses as permitted in that zone. And we believe that the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance is strongly challenged here by the applicant's proposed substantial departure from the community planning vision for this zone as articulated in the zoning ordinance. Plus, on top of it, a massive building asking for multiple variance relief, design waivers, design exceptions, excuse me, that exhibits the appearance of four stories in the front and five stories in the rear, where three stories at the maximum for both the CBD one and also actually the CBD two zone. And similarly, if you're looking at the master plan, the land use element of the 2020 master plan does not recommend apartments on the ground floor in the CBD one zone. The conceptual vision plan that's in the 2020 master plan identifies the subject property as part of the quote-unquote retail core. The master plan, the 2020 master plan focuses on commercial in the retail core and encourages supporting residential development outside the retail core. Or in other words, outside the location of the subject property. And further, the conceptual vision plan in the 2020 master plan also identifies a downtown living area as located blocks away from the subject property in the train station and not directly across the street from the, from the train station. And I know this board talked a bit about the Downtown Development Commission. Now, parenthetically, the Downtown Development Commission is not a referral agency for this board for a use variance development application. It is the master plan and the zoning ordinance that what is, that is what is controlling for this application. And in fact, actually, with regard to some comments from the Downtown Development Commission and any reference to the, the former Urbanomics Study, the master plan actually rejected a suggestion for residential apartments on the first floor. And actually, that study also discusses having more art spaces and other downtown attractions and not just adding residential. also discusses having more art spaces and other downtown attractions and not just adding residential apartments to encourage people, which includes the CBD Two Zone, to spend time downtown. But again, none of the four elements of the Medici analysis for use variance relief, we believe, have been satisfied by the applicant. Whether it's the use variances pertaining to the actual putting apartments on the first floor and not having apartments above the above apartments being above retail or or offices. In addition to the use variance relief that we believe is required pursuant to the to the knuckle verse little fairy case and its and its progeny. As to the C two variances, we believe that the applicant has not demonstrated that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, or that any benefits of the many ordinance deviations would substantially outweigh any any detriment. Certainly, the applicant under the Kaufman case, the applicant has not demonstrated that the ordinance deviations constitute a better zoning alternative for the property as compared to complying with the ordinance requirements. And of course, the the property we contend does not qualify at all for C one variance relief, given that is currently that it currently has compliant lot dimensions without a a structure on it. And even if we're talking about the ten or so requests for exception relief under section one, section fifty one B in this Balanuse Law, the applicant has not demonstrated under that section that literal enforcement of the site plan ordinance is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of the peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question, especially given that the property is currently vacant and is conforming as to lot size, lot width, and lot depth. We believe that the applicant cannot meet positive negative criteria for the needed use in bulk variance relief. It does not qualify under section fifty one B of the municipal land use law for exception relief. The applicant has also not provided the information or proofs that we believe are required for a de minimis for de minimis exception relief from any applicable RSIS standards, particular relating to the number of parking spaces, especially given the allocated one parking space per residential unit, and we don't believe that given the proofs that have been presented to date, that this board is also finally not in a position to grant the preliminary and final site plan approval and the related variance relief required for not just for lot twenty four, but also incident to the development of lots eleven, twelve, twenty two, and twenty three, with I which I brought to the board's attention, actually, the very, very first hearing. And we still contend certainly that the no approval should be granted for those other lots as well. And so for all of these reasons and for all the reasons that were raised by Mr. Pasolano that were brought to bear by virtue of cross examination and excellent questions by the board members and board professionals, we respectfully contend that the application is currently presented should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, Peter Wolfson of Date Pitney. Let me start by expressing the appreciation of our client, the applicant, as well as his entire team for the patience that has been demonstrated and the attention that has been paid to this application through the many hearings that have been conducted on it. I think it's a very thorough record. I think there is significant expert testimony and factual testimony, all of which the board can safely and should grant an approval. Before I get into my very brief remarks, I just a couple of comments on some of Mr. Simon's observations. First of all, without getting specifically into point by point, just for the record, do not agree with almost every conclusion that he expressed relative to our application. Furthermore, we do not endorse his testimony on his ideas of percentages or other numbers that he cited. The plan is in the record and there's significant expert testimony on that score. We also take great exception to his testimony that the applicant allowed the theater to remain vacant. To the contrary, the testimony is both before the HPC and as incorporated here that the theater operator canceled his lease prematurely and vacated the space. So it was not my client's decision. That is in the record, so Mr. Simon's testimony is incorrect. My planner and I spent a lot of time trying to understand Mr. Simon and his planner's theory that the shared driveway somehow gave rise to a use variance. One factual statement that he repeated tonight that the driveway is being introduced onto the subject lot twenty four. If that's a premise to his theory and his planner's theory, it's factually incorrect. A portion of the shared driveway has existed on lot twenty four, the subject lot, all along. In terms of his statement that there's no discussion or testimony relative to where overnight guests and other visitors to this development will stay, there was extensive testimony by our traffic expert Eric Keller about the availability of parking within easy walking distance, and it's amply documented in the traffic report that he submitted and that the board's traffic expert, we believe, favorably commented on. We do not agree with his dismissal of the importance of the Downtown Development Commission, just as we would never dismiss the importance of the Historic Preservation Commission with whom we met many, many times and had significant work with. And finally, he's dead wrong both on the facts and the law, as I understood him to express them on the time of the decision rule whereby he is arguing that we owe a fifth affordable unit. As is in the record here, the dates that he cites are wrong, they're in the record. Furthermore, he said that we needed to be deemed complete in order to take advantage of the time of application rule. That's not the law. You must submit a substantially complete application in advance of the effective date of the ordinance, and we did that. Without being said, this project has had a long life before this board on the current application with consideration of prior iterations of plans before the Historic Preservation Commission on many, many occasions, seeking historic review certification, and on a prior occasion before this board to appeal three of the HPC imposed conditions. Let me also address one thing that has taken a long time in navigating this project to this point. Mr. Simon made a lot of mention of it, and that is the demolition that recently took place to the building. That building, as was testified to extensively and as was accepted by the HPC, was structured unsound and had various conditions that led to unhealthy conditions. Our client worked patiently for well more than a year, could have been two years, I haven't checked, with both New Jersey Transit and the United States Postal Service and General Services to weigh out and agree upon protocol both for the demolition and the construction on that site. So the delay in timing of the demolition is strictly of the applicant having diligently worked through those processes. So because this has taken a long time in front of this board and other boards, I won't take a lot of time now before I respectfully request an approval of the application. This applicant has worked in good faith and with great respect for community at each station of its journey, accepting and implementing many suggestions from its neighbors, the HPC, and its professionals, and this board and its professionals. We are before this board because the plan you see, we believe, captures the best of planning concepts articulated in your ordinance and the municipal land use law. The plan provides the borough's desired retail on the streets gate. It provides much needed downtown residential with the first four units not visible from the streets gate. Both of those uses, as Mr. Simon acknowledged, are permitted uses. Both of those uses together on one property is permitted. And it supplies four sorely needed affordable units, which helps the borough meet its affordable numbers. You heard testimony from the applicant's civil and traffic engineer, Eric Keller, about the proposed building and site improvements, the sufficiency of parking, circulation and traffic improvements, and the reasonable but necessary illumination levels required. Mr. Keller also testified as to the reasonableness of the requested design waiver relief. You also heard from the applicant's architect Jeff Gertler about the elevation and floor plans for the building, including bedroom distribution, amenities proposed, and the retail space. You heard testimony from the applicant's planner, Paul Phillips, as to the building story issues. Specifically, Mr. Phillips opined that the building is three stories in height with the interior mezzanines for the third floor units functioning as a part of the third floor. He also noted that if the board were to decide that the building is in fact four stories in height, that the benefits of permitting such a fourth story outweigh any detriments, that no substantial detriment is caused to the public good or zone plan, and that a variance is justified. Please recall that this building proposed meets the maximum height allowed in feet by the averaging formula in your ordinance and at the street is below the maximum height permitted. Addressing the use variance, Mr. Phillips testified as to site suitability, noting the grade change on the property from front to rear, allowing for rare onsite and below grade parking and making it so that the first four apartments are not visually perceived as being located on the ground floor of the building. He further testified that the intent of the ordinance is met as the building integrates ground floor retail into the streets gate with two retail with with retail space, no more than two, on the ground floor facing Lincoln Place. With the depth of the lot, Mr. Phillips also testified that it would be difficult to market retail spaces that do not front on Lincoln Place, making the rear portion of the property more suitable for the proposed apartments. And Mr. Simon dismissed Mr. Phillips' testimony. You'll recall very specifically that Mr. Phillips was accepted as an expert and is perfectly qualified to testify on trends in retail and all other land uses. And he further testified that he is the municipal planner in Melbourne and testified as to the changes in the ordinance there that reflect the trends in retail. On the bulk variances, Mr. Phillips noted that some of the variance relief sought actually is for conditions which are an improvement over what existed with the movie theater and reiterated the testimony of the applicant's other professionals in support of the remainder of the relief. The applicant is proposing a new development that will be a much needed resource for Madison's downtown. In many respects, the development conforms to what is permitted on this property. The zoning ordinance contemplates a mixed use of retail and residential, both of which are achieved as part of this project. Importantly, the building complies with the forty five foot height requirement, and again, at the street, it's actually lower. The project also meets the prevailing front yard setback of the district and improves upon existing impervious coverage and rear yard setback that existed when occupied by the movie theater. The applicant has demonstrated a consistent willingness to work with the borough and its bodies, its professionals and residents to create a project that will invigorate the downtown district and fit in with the surrounding community. The proposed building, while incorporating modern conveniences, honors its place in the historic district, and you heard testimony as to the homage that is being paid to the theater in multiple ways with great care paid through the collaboration with the HPC. Significant public parking is available within easy walking distance from the site in addition to the twenty four onsite spaces. It will provide modernly sized brick and mortar retail to the downtown district and twenty four residences in brand new upscale living units, bringing in additional residents to shop, eat, live, and work in Madison. Thanks again for your time and attention to this application. We respectfully request that you approve it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson, and thank you also, Mr. Simon, for your comments as well. Much appreciated. So Gary, we should move to deliberation, I believe.
Yes, I think that's now the time for the board. You've heard both sides. I I just wanted real quickly, I won't waste time, but to I think there are a couple, what I would call legal issues. Fundamentally, it's for the board to weigh the evidence, and you've done variances, you know, the criteria, but one, I agree with Mr. Wilson as to the time of application issue. As he said, it's not a you don't need a completeness determination, you need a fundamentally complete application when you file it. And the court, Supreme Court, has said that means the pieces of paper that are required. So and that issue was looked at last fall internally with the town. So I just I agree with Mr. Wilson. It's a subjective issue, but we proceeded for many months without on that theory, and I I agree with it. The other one, real quickly, the the claim of use variance relief for the driveway improvements. I'm aware, and actually, I think yesterday I reread the the knuckle decision that's referenced by Mr. Simon. And I see this is totally distinguishable, and I don't see any need for any other use variances. I the plans I looked at appeared that there'd always been a driveway there, it just it really wasn't used by the theater because they didn't provide parking for their patrons. But there was a driveway there, and it's being upgraded and shared, and it's not expanding to the only new additional user, if any, would be the the residents to the proposed building. So as far as the the facilities to the rear, whoever's been using it now, they they've been they're using it now, and they'll use it in the future, and it's not opening from anything I've seen or heard encouraging more more traffic. Will people perhaps drive through the the cut through to Main Street? Yeah, maybe. I don't know, but that's this. This isn't, it's not permitted and shouldn't be permitted. So anyway, that those two issues, I just want to get out there, they're legal fundamentally. But other than that, it's I think it's the board should weigh the evidence. Your decision is based on the evidence, not the not the inference or or hypotheticals. It's based on the evidence you've heard, you evaluated, and you should go from there. So. If anybody has a legal question, I'd be glad to answer it as you go, either now or as you go along, that's fine.
Well, if the board has any legal questions based on what Mr. Hall has said, why don't you ask it just because it's important, I think, that he clarified those two points, and anybody has a question about that.
I have a different question that arises from Mr. Hall's memo of March second. As I was going back through the materials, there was an item in there about requests written. It was your your memo and question for Gary.
Yeah, March second, I was that on the prior application?
No, it's March two of twenty twenty one.
Okay.
And you had you had tracked you had tracked through the different places in the testimony about changes that, you know, the the engineer Keller had indicated changes would be made. It was items of those nature. And then it came to request written confirmation of fire official response to potential concerns. And I I don't recall, I know Mr. Harrington testified about meeting fire officials on site, and I I suppose maybe that's something that we could add a condition that the the fire official, assuming we approve this, that we would want something in writing to memorialize what the fire official said on site.
Yeah, you could require that. I think there was testimony of an onsite.
Yeah, I kind of I remember testimony that police but public police, public works and fire were all okay with this.
But just to backtrack, I recall now what you were talking about. Sorry for the confusion. I prepared a list of what I perceived as the open issues or follow up matters identified at the I guess the initial here. Wasn't very legal, it was just here's a list of things that came up to refresh people's memories, that's all. But yeah, but back to your question, I mean, you can you can have conditions for documentation or whatever, but my recollection is that there was testimony as chairman.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay, so any other questions? Okay, so what we'll do is we're going to move to deliberation. I'm going to go first on this one. I think that's really what I should do as board chair. I just want to state that I went through pretty much all the materials, a giant stacks that are next to me in preparation for this, and I read through the fan scripts. in preparation for this, and I read through the fan scripts, I looked at actually a couple of videos as well, all the planner memos, technical memos, and so forth, and then I sat down with the new master plan and went through that in detail and tried to reconcile what the various planners were talking about and looking for the evidence there as well in terms of what should help to guide us. And I started to write it down, and to be honest with you, it's so long that I think it would be impossible to go through it on an impromptu basis, which is normally what I do. I'll talk for fifteen minutes or something on an impromptu basis and work my way through it. But, you know, this is so important to all the stakeholders here, including the applicant and the public and citizens of Madison, the objectors as well, that I try and articulate in greater detail how I came to my particular decision, and I'm speaking, of course, for myself and as an individual board member, not for the board, and what I, what I share with you, I hope will help you to reconcile this as well, and and I may, you know, maybe you might find it beneficial. So I've taken the time to do that. I'm going to have to read it, hopefully having enough popcorn to make it through. So I'm going to do that now. Let me just call it up here on the screen. Okay, so I'd like to share my thoughts and analysis of the application presented to us over the course of seven meetings. In terms of architecture, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna work my way through the biggest and most important issues. I may not cover every single issue, but these are the key issues that really resonated with me and what information I sort of processed and how I applied and where I came out on it. So in terms of architecture, I'll say that in response to Mr. Stern's technical review, last updated January 24, 2021, Mr. Gertler, the applicant's architect, testified to the proposed building design and how it relates or related to the buildings in the downtown historic district, as well as buildings along Lincoln Place and the trace, and the train station, to the point where I am comfortable with the architectural proposal. More specifically, the proposed building replaces a dilapidated monolithic structure that could not be repurposed or otherwise saved. The proposed building will now have a design that treats all four building elevations. In my view, it is attractively designed relative to all of the, all of the elevations. Obviously, it was just monolithic with really only building, excuse me, windows in the front and just brick on the sides. Moreover, based on testimony by the architect in regards to his analysis of various building designs that exist in the downtown, I conclude that the proposed building is thoughtfully designed and fits within the fabric of the downtown, and there was rather extensive presentation by the architect, and that was not lost on me. There was an awful lot of very interesting information there. I gave quite a bit of thought to the design of the proposed, proposed building relative to the ordinances regarding, regarding historic district preservation. I think I mentioned some of this during the, during the application. In particular, section 112.7 standard, standards, design guidelines and criteria. That's part of the historic district preservation language. More specifically, section 112.7C2, which states, quote, "It's not the intent of this chapter to discourage contemporary architectural expression or to encourage new construction which emulates existing buildings of historical architectural design, but rather to preserve the integrity and authenticity of the historic preservation districts and to ensure the compatibility of new structures therein," end quote. In my view, the proposed design is consistent with the intent of that section, and certainly, in my view, does not rise to the level of being inconsistent with historic preservation districts. In my view, the applicant has complied with the mandatory conditions set forth by the Historic Preservation Commission, that is the HPC. These conditions address elements of the application that lie within the HPC's specific responsibilities and scope. These include mandatory condition number 11, setting forth the key design elements for the building. The applicant followed those. There's no way to, to look at it any other way. They also include mandatory conditions number five, six, seven, and eight that address matters of documentation, preservation, and creating plaques for the display of historical information. For example, the HPC and the developer agreed to the removal and storage of the original ticket booth for potential exhibition or reuse in the interior of the building or elsewhere. Additionally, as stated in the memo from HPC to this board dated 1/26/21, quote, "The applicant proposed two plaques to the HPC to include a timeline of theater development and one more specific to this building in addition to reuse of the stone, excuse me, of the Stone Lions Theater plaque." And this was approved by the HPC. "To include these elements, necessary variances should be granted," end quote. So that's a request by HPC to grant variances in that respect. "I am in favor of granting a variance to displace such plaques or other historical materials." Let's just get that out there. In terms of building height, the proposed structure conforms to the CBD one-zone requirement, forty-four point nine feet proposed versus forty-five feet permitted and forty-seven point five feet exist. Additionally, I consider the applicant's architect presenting an exhibit labeled Heights of Buildings in Downtown Madison. Mr. Simon mentioned that as well, which details, I mean, if you looked at that, that was handed to us, we're expected to look at it and study it, and I did. And that provides details of eighteen buildings in the downtown relative to height and number of stories. The exhibit placed into the record shows that eleven of the eighteen buildings are taller than the proposed structure. Regarding number of stories, the exhibit shows that there were, there are currently six four-story buildings in the downtown, and four of them are taller than the proposed structure. In my view, the height of the proposed structure, as well as the number of stories, should the board conclude that a variance for number of stories is warranted, are not out of character with Madison's downtown. Regarding the number of stories, although the planner, applicant's planner was in disagreement with the board's planner, Mr. Stern, I do conclude and suggest to the board that a C variance is necessary and should be granted for a fourth story. I believe Mr. Stern is correct in that the mezzanine loft level continues, constitutes, excuse me, I, I conclude and suggest to the board that a C variance is necessary and should be granted for a fourth story. I believe Mr. Stern is correct in that the mezzanine loft level constitutes a story, thus exceeding the number of stories permitted in the zone, four stories proposed versus three stories permitted. Bearing in mind the building conforms to the height requirement of the zone, I believe we can grant the variance without substantial detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and those are the key words as we've heard about through this application, substantial detriment, and we'll hear about that some more from me as I proceed. If the mezzanine were eliminated, they could still retain the same building height and compliance with the ordinance and virtually no change to the exterior of the building. Similarly, the applicant could eliminate the mezzanine and reduce the height of the third floor, and instead increase the height of the first floor, such as exists in many old buildings, and still retain the same building height and compliance with the ordinance and virtually no change to the exterior of the building. Factually, nine mezzanines are proposed, with the largest at one hundred and twenty-two square feet, which also includes access to a balcony. The mezzanine's impact to the intensity used, in my view, is negligible. I think the mezzanines are an attractive feature that enhances the housing stock in Madison. In this particular circumstance, I think we should provide the applicant the variance relief. In terms of the existing condition of Lot 24 and surrounding properties that, that are part of this application, Mr. Stern's revised technical review of January 24, 2021, had a number of important comments that we should factor in. As we learned through testimony, the area suffers from many issues such as, we heard it, broken pavement and sidewalks, unstriped parking lots, no trash enclosures, unsanitary conditions, garbage cans piled high out in the mark, out in the open and easily accessible for burning, poor lighting, lack of stormwater management, and little or no controls relative to traffic flow and lot access. I personally visited the site several times. The immediate area is indeed in very poor condition and gives the impression of being blighted and unsafe, and I don't mean to insult any property owners that may be listening, but that's, that was how I viewed it when I visited. To the applicant's credit, the applicant has been successful in securing cooperation from neighboring property owners regarding improvements that the applicant intends to make to their properties. These improvements include the driveway and sidewalk will be rehabilitated and include decorative ballards, decorative fencing, and other measures. Lots 22 and 23 and 11 will be resurfaced and rehabilitated in whole or in part, partially on Lot 11, I would note. Lot lighting is going to be modernized on adjacent lots 22 and 23 to include decorative lighting, decorative lighting. Problematic lighting will be removed. Stormwater management and drainage improvements will occur on lots 22, 23, and 24. Access control will be provided on lots 22 and 23. Two crosswalks will be installed on Lincoln Place to enhance public safety. Signage relative to traffic flow and circulation will be installed. And I want to note also that the applicant did make modifications to its, to its building and the door, garage door, to improve traffic flow and safety, so they were cooperative in that regard as well. Lastly, there's going to be decorative trash enclosures on lots 24 and Lot 11 where the multifamily building is. Now, there may be some other things I missed, but those are the ones that I noted as I went through the materials. In my view, the improvements the applicant intends to make are significant. They reduce, mitigate, or eliminate negative criteria relative to the application and help address significant longstanding issues. I believe this application and the related improvements in neighboring lots will stimulate investment by other property owners and attract infill development nearby, including Main Street. Quite frankly, we may never see an opportunity like this to significantly further the goals and objectives of the master, master plan relative to ensuring the thriving Lincoln Place and Main Street as well. Regarding traffic, the board, the board's traffic engineer Harold Malz reviewed the application, heard the testimony of Mr. Keller, and was in agreement. He considered the traffic increase too small to have an impact. As it pertains to parking, forty-seven spaces required. While twenty-four are provided, one space is available for each unit within the parking garage. No spaces are required for retail use. Mr. Malz stated that the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards, Rsis, as well as the Borough Code, allows the use of alternative parking standards. He cited available mass transit, the train station, buses on Main Street, off-street parking at six municipal lots, and on-street parking for visitors and retail customers. He voiced no objection to the parking proposal. I believe the use of alternative parking standards is well-reasoned and prudent for this application. The applicant has agreed to control the allocation of parking spaces and tenants and, and, excuse me, parking spaces, and tenants will know of this limitation when considering living there. As we heard in testimony, if a tenant has a second vehicle, one option is using a borough-owned lot located along near King's Road. This includes the Prospect Lot, Green Lot, Maple Lot, and King's Road Lot. The tenants in the proposed dwelling would be eligible to use them as the building is located within the downtown historic district. In summary, I do not have a concern regarding parking or traffic, and so certainly, these aspects of the application do not rise to the level of being a significant detriment to the zone, the master plan, or the zoning ordinance. And indeed, I think the signage acceptor that's being put forth by the applicant, I think, reduces any confusion that may occur and will add order to the overall flow on those lots. I want to move now to the planner arguments and also the master plan. Concerning the D1 use variance, which places this application into the jurisdiction of this board, relief is necessary as six of the apartments, three are affordable units, are located above structured parking while apartments are only permitted over stores or offices. So the front thirty feet or so portion is conforming while the rear one-hundred-plus-foot section is not. So in terms of the way I process that, in my view, Mr. Phillips addressed the positive and the negative criteria. I think his report was very well-written. It's succinct, and I think it's on point, and I, I read it many times, and I do agree with it. He talked about the appropriateness of the proposal, and he cited that a conforming nine thousand plus or minus square foot of retail space would be a significant amount of floor value to go to market with today, and particularly for a lone tenant. And to me, that's a signal to me that there's a substantial amount of risk to the applicant to try and do that in today's environment. For other than a single tenant occupying the entire ground floor area, Mr. Phillips stated that the commercial space would be inefficient, if not dysfunctional, from a perspective, for prospective tenants due to the long and narrow configuration. As we heard in testimony, retail landlords are currently facing problems from COVID e-commerce amongst the changing retail landscape. Brick-and-mortar retail is difficult. Mr. Phillips cited trends whereby the size of retail tenant spaces is decreasing and vendors maintain only a limited amount of stock on premises. He concluded that the proposed retail configurations were footage are adequate. The proposal provides a retail presence and will keep the street state activated, that was his term, keep it activated along Lincoln Place, and thus meeting the intention, the intent of the ordinance. As noted by Mr. Phillips, the CBD one district speaks of, speaks of maintaining the commercial viability of the downtown, in this case, through the proposed retail use and new housing stock. Moreover, his report states that, quote, "As a practical matter, the apartments are not really ground floor units as viewed from the street. They're also located above a parking level instead of stores or offices and are only visible from the side or the rear area." And I concur with Mr. Phillips' analysis. As it concerns the D1 variance, and as noted in Mr. Stern's technical report revised January 24, 2021, the 2020 master plan takes issue with the existing ordinance requiring ground floor retail and seeks to, quote, "verify the extent and amount of ground floor retail and commercial use is required to allow apartments above stores and offices." This can be found in Chapter Three, Page 19, Strategies for the CBD Zone. It's in the master plan. In my opinion, this statement identifies a flaw in the CBD one code, zoning code. One size does not fit all. As it stands, there is no distinction between small and large properties. In my opinion, the applicant, the application before us meets the intent of the ordinance. The application provides four D restricted affordable housing units. Three are located on the first floor. I don't see an issue with where they're located within the building. I think it's very important to the borough that it gets those four affordable housing units. That's a very good thing. Concerning the D1 variance, there was no objection from the Downtown Development Committee or Chamber of Commerce with respect to input from the DDC or Downtown Development Commission. Eric Range, Vice Chair, testified, providing DDC's clear endorsement of the application. Incidentally, the DDC's memo to this board dated 1/26/11 called the proposed building a, quote, "contemporary structure that pays homage to many of the, of the historical buildings," end quote. The memo further states that they, the DDC, quote, "embrace it as a new icon of Madison built in the 21st century at one of our key gateways," end quote. Dropping back to matters of planning, the DDC cited in Urbanomics Study, an independent market analysis conducted by the Borough in 2016 as follows. Quote, "There was a genuine concern for the future of Madison's downtown. One of the largest takeaways of that market analysis was to have a genuinely thriving downtown. We must consider how to increase the residential population in our central downtown core. While the recent developments at the former Green Village Road School site and Greenwood Avenue added some residential capacity, the study suggests we have built only about one-half of the capacity recommended." Additionally, and importantly, were her testimony from Madison's Chamber of Commerce, who provided their endorsement of the application citing the need to increase residential living space, and as John Morris said, foot traffic in the downtown. In my view, and the endorsement of the DDC and Chamber of Commerce are important inputs. We're not going to judge everything on that, but they are inputs, and we should factor them in as inputs. And keep that in mind as we weigh this application against the goals and strategies set forth in the, in the master plan. So I think what they said is important to bear in mind, so certainly not going to exclude that, at least as far as I'm concerned. The applicant has been very responsive to inquiries and recommendations made by the Madison Environmental Commission and the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee relative to the use of sustainable building materials, energy conservation, electrification, electric vehicle charging, landscaping, and other points they raised. Chapter Two, Page Three of the master plan. Chapter two, page three of the master plan contains a set of guiding principles. The first guiding principle is Madison is committed to being a model for energy efficiencies, sustainability and resiliency. I point out that the M E C's input on land use applications is recommendatory only and the applicant need not accommodate the M E, M E C's recommendations. Yet they have done that to the extent reasonably possible and to the applicant's credit. So I, I for one was impressed by the fact that they responded to those memos from the M E C and made concessions. I thought that was terrific. Relative to improvements made, uh, being made in neighboring lots, and this came up earlier, the police department, fire department and department of public works were all satisfied with the proposal. Finally, as there are a number of variants and waivers, exceptions, number of variances and waivers slash exceptions being requested. I do not consider the number or magnitude of these to be excessive or problematic under the circumstances of this particular application. I believe the benefits derived from the application clearly outweigh the detriments either applied in relation to the movie theater or a vacant slash demolished lot. Uh, I just want to, before I end this, I wanted to cite where I looked for these things in the master plan because it seemed like in planner testimony, there was comments about what's in the master plan. There was other, I think, important elements of the master plan that was sort of glossed over. Then I think that should be mentioned here as to what's in that plan. And I'm, I'm sure you all have read it many times, but I'm going to say it anyway. And maybe for the public, if they would benefit from hearing this. Chapter one, page nine specifically cites the Borough of Madison, New Jersey Downtown Revitalization Study of twenty seventeen. Prepared for the Borough of Madison and Madison Downtown Development Commission, the Downtown Revitalization Study is a comprehensive analysis of Madison's commercial center. The study names regulatory context, market conditions and physical place as the primary influences on the downtown environment and uses, and uses these categories to identify both short and long-term strategies for the appropriate market-based development. One of these strategies was to specifically increase the population density downtown to meet market demands and bolster downtown commercial activity. I need five hundred new studio one-bedroom units. Chapter one, page ten states that Madison has a long history of developing and implementing affordable housing units. And while the borough is currently in the process of meeting its affordable housing obligation, we should not lose sight of the fact that this application is providing for affordable housing units. Chapter one, page eighteen starts in discussion on the pandemic response. Page nineteen highlights the following, the trend towards online shopping is also expected to continue as it had prior to the pandemic. To be able to compete with the likes of Amazon, Amazon retailers will likely have to improve their ability to sell online and to deliver packages quickly. This is supportive of Mr. Phillips' testimony. Chapter three, page fifteen addresses issues and opportunities in, in the e-commerce and retail sector. It references a Harvard Business Review article or study regarding trends. So it wasn't pulled out of thin air. It's, it's in there. It's in the, it's in the master plan. It is also supportive of Mr. Phillips' test. Page, chapter three, page nineteen, Strategies for the C B D Zone, Strategy J. You mentioned this earlier, quote, "clarify the extent and amount of ground floor retail and commercial uses required to allow apartments above stories and offices." I view that as we should have an open mind to consider reasonable applications along these lines. The application promotes the following goals. Now, this is probably about the goals of the man set forth in the master plan located in chapter two. There's a series of goals and I just want to call out the ones that I think are clearly relate to this. Uh, goal number one is to promote a variety of residential, commercial, recreational, public and conservation land uses to maintain and enhance Madison as a thriving community. The first things that are called out are residential and commercial. Number two is to encourage development and revitalization and preservation opportunities near transit, parks, shopping and community facilities. So obviously it's calling out um development in the shop, near shopping and, and transit. Number three, protect and enhance the economic viability of the downtown by encouraging combined residential and commercial development in the C B D core downtown living opportunities and flexible use of the sidewalk realm, public space and retail opportunities. So clearly that's applicable, support a variety of housing types, sizes and living configurations for households in various life cycles and at a variety of income levels. Uh, also number seven, identify, preserve, rehabilitate historic resources and guide new development so that it does not detract from the form, design and distinguishing factors of such historic resources. And I think that this is totally designed, does that promote the borough that is welcoming to all residences. Lastly, in my view, the application fulfills the purpose of the C B D one zone as specified in the land development ordinance. And I'm going to read the first sentence of it because I think that's most applicable. The purpose of the C B D one zone is to promote a vital mixed-use walkable downtown core designed to encourage street-level pedestrian activity through ground-level locally oriented retail uses and upper-floor offices and residential uses. And I think that, um, you know, I think this application meets that. In summary, I believe the applicant, the applicant has satisfied the so-called positive and negative criteria as well as adequately addressed and in, adequately addressed the enhanced quality of proof standard set forth in the D C case as is required in connection with a D one use variance. As such, I am firmly in favor of this application. So um, that was a lot. But I felt like I had to do it. Sorry if you ran out of popcorn. But uh, what I'd like to do next is call on, why don't we have Diane? Would you like to uh provide your statements?
Sure. Um, like Joe, I would like to say that we've all thought about this long and hard. We've sat through a lot of hours of testimony. We've looked at transcripts and testimony and memos and everything else. I've taken quite a few pages of notes. Um, although I have to say my notes are not quite so organized as Joe's, but you know, no matter what design is proposed, somebody isn't going to like the design. I think that the architect for the applicant made a good case that what he has proposed is going to work in the downtown. I think Joe is completely correct, uh, as is the testimony that retail is never going to be what it once was and that the retail that's proposed will work to keep the streetscape active. I agree with the downtown development commission and everything else that's been said about having residential in the downtown to keep the downtown vital and vibrant. You know, this project, you know, no project is ever perfect, but this project provides so many improvements. You know, I really think it, I think it's a good application and they have made a lot of changes to it. I agree that, you know, the variances can be granted without impairment to the zone plan. I, I think it's a general improvement to the downtown and a good thing for the town. So I'm in favor of it also. And I will rest my testimony there, my opinion.
Thank you. Thanks for being more brief than I was. Um, okay. So what, uh, Roger, would you like to speak?
Certainly would. I'll, I'll be somewhere in between the two. Um, I think addition to all the um comments we made on sites and whatnot, um, I do think that the site is somewhat particularly suited just with the drop off of ten feet. It's quite significant the way it drops off allowing parking underneath, which I think is really great for that site. You know, the first floor apartments that we talked about, they really will not be seen at all from street level. They are on there requiring a use variance, but they are really not seen, uh, which means any retail in the back's not going to be seen. You know, nine thousand square feet of a single retail, I do not think in today's economy would work. Numbers, doors, you know, dividing up into multiple shops in the back, I don't think would really work. So you know, I do think that the way things are changing, there is a strong demand for real residential downtown. And I, I do think that that site would work for that. I did agree with the objectors planner when his, his comment that um, you know, once we lose retail or commercial space, it is gone for good. Uh, and that is a concern, but as we change to a, you know, an e-commerce, I'm not sure whether it is important. Uh, I did, you know, weigh somewhat on the D D C, uh, the ergonomic study and their particular comment, which said to have uh, Madison's downtown continue to thrive was a very large need increase for residential population in the downtown core, uh, which I consider this property big. You know, just in the last year, I guess, reviewing this application, we've been going over, driving around town. See the increased number of people there, you know, whether it's because of the pandemic or whether it's just changed up economics, the number of people on way early eating on the sidewalks out in front of the uh, the restaurants there on Main Street in front of fifty-four Main, the more people on the street. Again, I think it's a good location for a couple of small retail shops there facing Lincoln, um, to allow that to continue. I do agree that it's a significant from the theater, significant improvement to that site and hopefully it will generate more improvement on Lincoln. At least that's, that's the hope. You know, there is still a very large retail space on, you know, in the old Green Village school there, which is still empty. So it just doesn't seem like large retails, ground floors are really viable. I was going to say the, I guess Gary said it with the use variance for the driveway. Didn't see any, any real need for that. I didn't think that affected it. I do think it's a very much needed resource or downtown area and um you know, the fact that our, our experts on the traffic and the parking seem to be very comfortable with the application was one of the long way for me. Um, I think that was good. And although there, you know, are a number of variances, um, the way the lot size is laid out, that kind of controls the way the building is laid out. Uh, and so I'm good with that. And I do think just the benefits of this project do far, far outweigh any risks to the master plan. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, Mary Sue, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you like to speak now, please?
Sure. So you know, just to reiterate that in support of all the comments that I've heard thus far from the board, this was just a behemoth of an application, you know, and it just spanned many months. Lots of expert testimony. I personally relied on the testimony of our experts of Dennis and Frank and Russell. Um, and that really helped to put me over the finish line in regards to weighing uh, the benefit versus the detriment to Madison. And as you highlighted, Joe, the applicant, I think, really worked above and beyond uh, with our team in Madison to make this an attractive design to fit in with the streetscape. I compliment and applaud them for everything that they're doing to make this just a beautiful gateway to Madison in regards to innovation and technology they're bringing. I did have some concerns a, around the retail space, but just weighing the experience that we've had within COVID and where we're moving to, um, and, and keeping that in mind when reviewing the master plan. I really feel that this design and this application is in support of the master plan in bringing more vitality to Madison. And so I have no objections to this and I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Sue. Uh, Anthony, would you like to comment?
Sure. Um, yeah, I think I've kind of already been on record about my concerns, um, concerned with the traffic. Um, and kind of opening up that area um, to, you know, at least twenty-four cars that are going to be parking underneath. With a gate that, you know, is going to be opening and closing and, you know, generally making that confusing area um, more inviting. I, I think that the commercial space was a bit of an afterthought. And um, you know, it, it would be great to, you know, see a larger space or a restaurant with seating out front. Because I think that would really um, improve the uh, the walking vitalization of the downtown. But at the same time, I understand the challenges that, you know, kind of come with this new normal and that, you know, uh, absent a perfect retail situation, um, retail on the ground floor of this building may stay vacant, um, which is obviously not desirable, especially in that spot. You know, I, in my opinion, I think those, you know, my issues could have been solved with something not as big, not as many u, units with an improvement on retail space. And you know, less cars going in and out, um, and creating a potential traffic traffic issue. But you know, I think kind of to echo Diane's point, nothing, um, no application is perfect. And you know, I, I, while I have these concerns, um, and I've expressed them. If, you know, the other board members don't feel the same way, um, you know, that's fine. And, and like I'm largely um, favor this application. So um, so I would be okay approving it.
Okay. So you're in favor? I just want to make sure that the, the applicant and everybody understands you're in favor of the application.
Yes.
Okay. Tim, would you like to speak?
Yeah, sure. A couple of um, a couple of additional comments. Um, you know, focused on the, on the, the use variance. And I, I appreciate the, 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 the theory that, you know, with a, with a lot, in particular a vacant lot, um, you have the opportunity to build something that is fully compliant. Now, I would counter that with, you know, there's some retail that already exists on the block that is either fully compliant or closer to compliant than what's being proposed here. Um, and I view those properties as sort of suboptimal in terms of their uh, contribution to the, the community and the neighborhood. As I read the master plan, um, while not citing everything that, that, that Joe cited, I do see this proposal and the um, the split of ground floor retail and ground floor residential as being uh, in compliance with the spirit of the, the plan. Um, I do think there are some things that are specifically cited around a desire to bring residential to downtown, um, around a desire to create a more walkable downtown, um, around an ability to make concessions for one parking spot or residential unit. Um, all delineated in the master plan that has been recently updated. I do think it's worth noting that when you look at the master plan and comments on C B D and C B D one, uh, there are three sites that are cited specifically for um, uh, consideration in terms of more thoughtful uh, collaboration around infill. And one of them happens to be the adjacent spots to this property. Uh, I think it's really interesting when you look at the map that, that this, the, 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 the movie theater property was, was carved out of that, and it was just the adjacent properties that was left in. Um, but I'd like to think that this application and its collaboration with the adjacent properties is actually advancing um, some of the uh, some of the desired uh, collaboration and improvement uh, of this lot that is in chapter three of the master plan. Um, I think to Joe's comments, there are adjacent lots that for better or worse appear blighted. And the retail that they're providing, um, putting aside the residential that's there, the retail that they're providing is in no way special or unique or additive. Um, they are frankly, the same retail that is available closer to the core of downtown and in other parts of the, the, these sort of outskirts of the commercial districts. Um, I do think that this building and its design and the way it's proposed actually provides an opportunity to bring some differentiated retail. Um, I think, you know, to the comments that have also been provided, there are other vacant retail spots in the core of the business, uh, of the C B D. Uh, so every- So everything will have its challenges. Uh, and I think that this is a, 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 a sort of reasonable approach to, uh, to maintaining the spirit of the master plan. And again, one of the comments in the master plan is about the, 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 the streetscape and, and, and street facing being critical to retail. And, and consumers having affinity for that retail on, on the street. And again, a component of this would peak if we were to think about, um, uh, a fully compliant retail space in the ground floor, uh, perhaps retail space that is not street facing. So I think that this is, I, I, I think that this is, is certainly within the spirit of the master plan. I know there was also discussion of, of offices. And I think that while there is comments, there, there are comments in the master plan around office space as a, 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 a potential goal for, um, the CBD. I do have concerns around the, um, around the traffic impact of that, because I do think it's a different flow of traffic. Um, and perhaps a, 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 um, a more detrimental flow of traffic as used for offices as opposed to apartments where those that choose to live in those apartments know going in that they will be given one parking space and one parking space only. Couple other comments. I think with respect to the C variances, um, on the whole, many of these are, are improvements of existing conditions. Or, uh, not, not really detrimental to the overall project and the, the positive impact of this project overall. So I have few, if any, concerns around the, um, the C variances. I would just comment for the record. I, I don't, I don't have as, um, as specific a view with respect to, um, to Joe's comments around the, um, the variance for the fourth floor. However, if the board believes that it's, um, it's, it's in the best interest to have that as part of the resolution, I would be supportive of that too. So, um, I think to conclude my comments, I'm, I, I, I just note that I am supportive of this application.
Thank you very much, Tim. Christine, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. So a lot of what you articulated, Mr. Chairman, were, were the thoughts that I had, uh, on this matter. I, I'm not going to echo all those things. I, I think, um, you laid them out very well. Recognizing that the applicant made representations about parking controls at the site. I did have a couple of thoughts that perhaps could get kicked around as conditions. One would be that the parking space is built into any rent and affordability controls for those affordable units. Because I wouldn't want to see a situation where, uh, there were separate fees charged for the parking space. And then just kind of, you know, looking at where the proximity of that site to the train and that the parking controls would include something so that there's no subleasing of those parking spaces to non-residents. Because we wouldn't want traffic to include people that are coming and going to use the train who are not actually residents of the structure. Um, and I do have a concern about, um, that we're missing from our record, a written confirmation of the fire official responding to, you know, any potential concerns on the, on the site. And I did go back, I, I realized there was testimony, but when Mr. Simon's expert, uh, made an articulation about dumpster fires, I think we are, um, really duty bound to make sure that the, the fire official signs off in writing. And, um, there's no question about a, an interpretation of what was said to Mr. Harrington or what was said on site. So just subject to documentation from, from the fire would be one, one of my concerns. With respect to that idea that this space could somehow be used, uh, in a conforming way, uh, for windowless offices. That was actually the testimony, um, that was presented by, uh, Mr. Simon's expert. That, that kind of made me very concerned that, that that would be one of the, one of the uses here. That folks would get off the train and go to a windowless office. And so the applicant's planner, as they testified about e-commerce being more prevalent and that you can shift warehousing space offsite and you don't need it here. Um, I certainly do believe that the retail to the front of the structure serves the purposes of the master plan of having the retail on the streetscape and that natural flow. And it also does serve the purpose of having more residents come in who will be using the downtown. So, um, finding that, um, you know, the, the proofs, the proofs were met with respect to the, um, the proposed site being particularly suitable for the use and the testimony having, having been given about the slope of the property, the ability to put the, um, the parking underneath the structure. Um, I certainly think it's preferable that there's a shared driveway rather than have this particular building be served with its own new curb cut. That would really make no sense. It would be detract from its retail space and frontage. So I also would, in to that vein, say that it does not substantially impair the intent or purpose of the zone. There's no detriment to the public good. And certainly, uh, the applicant has definitely accommodated problems as they were brought up. Any concerns about the site were generously met as Mr. Stern's, um, memos detailed concerns about what that trash enclosure looked like. And that was accommodated to raise it. Concerns were brought up about where the vehicles were parking and how those things could be alleviated. And the applicant came to, to meet those issues. Concerns that arose about the traffic flow were certainly met with signage. Um, I have no problem with the, the neighboring lot having that, that gate. It makes sense that they're able to control who parks there. So I am in, in favor, in favor of this. As to the, as to the mezzanine level, um, I really think it meets one of the goals of the master plan that there's diverse housing offered for people in various stages of their life cycle. And, um, I do think it constitutes a floor and that it requires variance relief. But I certainly think, think it's an interesting architectural feature. And, um, I don't, I don't have a problem granting variance relief to allow that to happen. And I just wanted to comment about the, the windows and, um, the HPC is concerned about the windows. Uh, Mr. Gerler adequately addressed that in my mind, that, um, these are dwelling units and they need light. And, um, you know, making small windows, just because small windows are somewhere else, doesn't make any sense, uh, in this year. So this is a brave new structure and, um, that, that's all I had to add. Thank you.
So you're in favor?
I am.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, that's everybody. Gary, should we talk about any particular conditions at this point in time and also the variances? Because we have the fourth floor, et cetera. Talk about that.
Yeah, I've been thinking about how to deal with the fourth floor issue. The one conclusion I had, the preliminary one is you probably need to, since your jurisdiction is entirely based on the D1 variance. Though I guess it's everybody's, it seems to be in favor of that. I was gonna say, the, decide the, the story issues separately, but, uh, seems to be encompassed within the package. And there seemed like possible divergent views on the fourth story issue. Not that it isn't appropriate, but whether it's a variance or not. And just for the record, we, um, I think that, I think I'm the one who brought that, that issue up, or maybe Mr. Stern back in, I don't know, December, November, we had a meeting with the applicant's team early on to understand where they're headed. So I guess that's, that's one question. And the other question is, um, conditions. Christine threw some out for consideration. I think she was the only one who did. But, uh, if you're going to vote tonight, you should also articulate any conditions at the same time.
All right. So let's, let's talk about the three versus four stories. I don't think it makes a lot of difference, but, um, our planner believes that it's, it's correct to do that. And by doing that, if we have future application with larger mezzanines, it may come into play. I believe that we should do it. Does, does anybody feel we shouldn't, that it should stay at three floors? Or is, do you feel that we should just grant the variance for the pole of the fourth floor and grant the variance?
I think you should call it a fourth floor and grant the variance and be done with it.
Is everybody in agreement on that?
Yes.
Agreed.
Does anybody disagree with that? Okay, Gary.
That simplifies it. And just, as I said, Mr. Stern and I've talked about a few times, I think, is what he said is literally, it's another story, but it doesn't alter impacts in any way. So a variance would be reasonable. And I think that's what I'm hearing from the board. So we can, I can, I assume that's part of your, your, uh, I, I didn't hear any dissension as to any other variance or, or site plan exception. So I think there's no point in going through them all unless somebody wants to call one out and say, I, I don't like this. I think you can approve the application as a pack, package. I think the variances required have been articulated. We got a list from the applicant, uh, before the last meeting. I think the, the only difference would be the, the four story issue, which we just discussed. So I think, uh, I think you can vote on it as a package if you choose. But before doing that, you should, I think it'd be good to talk about whether there are any other conditions. Christine mentioned some good ones about the parking, uh, the 24 parking spaces. And, and just on that, Christine, they, and I don't know, Mr. Wilson, maybe you know, is the intent to have a separate charge for the parking or is, I think it was one per dwelling unit period? That be plugged into the rent? I mean, the reason I ask is that the, uh, under the, um, affordable housing, the affordable units are supposed to get the same services and benefits, so.
Right. Well, there's, as you know, Gary, there's a lot of complex, uh, regulations relative to the total rent and what constitutes it.
Yeah. And I don't know the answer on parking, but, but I think the testimony was that each unit would get a space now. And with affordable units, I'm not sure that, you know, where we go as far as adding more additional charges. It could be substantial.
Well, the, the testimony was that each unit will have one dedicated space. And I think that's the understanding of the board and I, I think the applicant should do that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a situation where years later, there's a tenant who says, you know, they say they're tenning. You're gonna have to pay for your park when everybody else is getting it for free, right? Or, you know, that sort of.
Yeah, that's the issue. It's not, it's the, well, and that dovetails with Christine's other suggestion that you shouldn't be able to sublease the space and, you know, get strangers in there. Or, or arguably, I don't know, separate related questions, whether somebody wants two spaces in the, in the unit, in the building. So they, uh, a resident subleases from somebody who doesn't want one. I don't know. Those are complicated questions. And I'm not sure how we deal with them. As the affordable units, I would suggest that you'd have general condition requiring consistency with CO regulations, which, or the analogy to CO regulations, it's CO doesn't exist anymore.
In my view, I think we shouldn't be too intrusive and allow the owner of the building to control, control the allocation of spaces as they see fit. And also to police it in terms of who's parking there. I, I don't think we need to get into that, to be honest with you. I think Christine has a good, a good point about, um, you know, the, the parking being included. I, I, I would not feel good about the affordable housing being denied a space unless they paid extra. I think it should be included.
Yeah, I was suggesting that whatever the, and I, I assume the borough has, uh, an affordable housing liaison administrator, whatever, they have, there are other affordable units in town.
I, I read, I raised this because I think it's being debated right now in other places.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's the question. Whatever is allowed, allowed. I don't know that it's, this board doesn't want to make rules. Whatever, whatever the rules are is that
But we get to make, we get to make conditions because
Yeah, you do. And, yeah, I agree.
We are, we are allowing a variance and we get to make conditions. So I, I, I think that's an appropriate condition.
Well, is the applicant opposed to having a condition that one space must be allocated to each of the affordable housing units?
I, I think that we're not opposed to making them available. Part of the testimony and traffic report and parking report was that with its proximity to mass transit, there could conceivably be tenants that don't keep a car. But certainly affordable unit residents will have the ability to, uh, have access to a parking space.
Well, you said access. Are they gonna have to pay for it? That's, I think that's a question you're
They, they will only pay for it to the extent that we are not allowed to exceed, uh, certain total dollar figures.
Yeah.
To the extent parking is part of that, we will not, we will comply with all the rules.
All right. So maybe that's not where we should be venturing.
Well, that, that answer makes me want to venture more because it needs to be included within the affordability controls as if it's part of the unit.
And it will
No additional cost. That's what you're suggesting.
Yes.
And you can do what you want with the market units, I think. Is that Christine, is that?
That's right. You could do what you want with the market units.
However, one space has to be available for each unit. Then no units will get no spaces.
Now, do people have a problem if somebody doesn't want a space if they
Yeah, that's why
A non-resident?
Well, that's why I'm concerned because if you had a resident who didn't need a parking space, then they should let the, I think you should let the landlord work that out.
Okay. So we don't need to go there then?
I don't think we should go there.
Others agree with that. So I think the only thing I'm heard, hearing is that the affordable units will be entitled to one parking space at no additional cost. Address Christine, at least that aspect of your
Yes.
Okay.
But, but Joe, you're comfortable with non-residents leasing a space?
No, no, I'm not. I'm saying that it's up to the landlord, the owner of the property to police what's going on on their own property. I, I don't think it's up for us to dictate those kinds of rules. I mean, they wouldn't want subleasing going on. Let them control it is what I'm saying.
I, I don't know that they don't want subleasing going on if, if they can, if they, I, I don't know that. I think they have to be linked to the residents. The whole point is that they serve the residents. So if unit one A isn't using their space and unit one B wants to use it, those things do work out. But if unit one A isn't using their space and Christine Tieratilly wants to be able to have nice covered parking to take the train and I'm willing to pay for it, I think that becomes a problem.
Well, there's 24 spaces. If, for example, we go down
That should be reserved?
Well, if we're 10 years from now, there's five apartments that don't need cars. Are we going to dictate what, what this landlord should do with it? They have spaces for 24. I don't understand why, why we should interject ourselves. They have 24 spaces that they could allocate to, to, you know, they can allow somebody to have more than one car if they so choose.
And we say priority should be given to the residents and that they may not, you can't, you know, something about that, that priority for parking has to be given to the residents of the building.
I mean, this isn't a park, I guess my issue is this is not a parking garage. This is not a way for this developer to be operating a parking garage. So to the extent that the parking spaces are not serving residents or tenants, if you have res, retail tenants in the front.
All right.
Certain, certain, you know, there would be ways to do that, but
So a condit, a condition that, that the parking is for tenants. Period.
That would be broad enough, certainly.
Do you have, you have a issue with that, Mr. Wilson?
Just that we've never discussed, we've discussed a lot about this project and this property. We've never discussed the concept of subleasing, so, um,
I guess what we're doing is narrowing it to say that the parking is for tenants.
One space per unit minimum, one space per unit available.
Yeah. I mean, you could allocate it any way you want. We're just saying that there should be tenants in there.
I, I hear you. I just haven't discussed it with the client. We certainly, look, we certainly would have priority to tenants or else we wouldn't rent units to the majority of the market, I would think, who would have a car. So we certainly will give priority to tenants.
Well, I think I'm hearing something different than what you think you'll want to do, but
Yeah, I mean, Chris- Christine, we're also, you're also talking about, I mean, look, frankly, there's there's technology where any tenant can list their parking space day of as well, right? I mean, uh not not to speak out of turn about people that I know that are, you know, that are doing that, but um. You know, and this is, this is a unique, this is a unique location, which we've um certainly drilled into the ground across uh seven um. Seven hearings here. Uh and this is something where people could have parking spaces and list day of parking online and be, you know, availing uh themselves in the market of of of. People using public transit. I just, it it is, it is a reality of this specific site and the technology that exists today.
Well, again, yes, and I and I I think that's a great point. But again, I I try and refrain from being too intrusive on applicants where. I I think that they would want to control who's entering and leaving their garage.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh one of the downfalls of Zoom is not being in person with my team, but I have gotten a uh text, which I think will resolve it. We'll include a provision in our leases that doesn't allow subleasing.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would be a condition, Gary.
Yeah, no subleasing, and also the uh it doesn't change that the affordable units parking included at no additional cost. One space per unit. So there are two conditions on parking, if I hearing correctly. The the other issue that Christine raised was written documentation from the fire official. That seems pretty straightforward.
Uh yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so.
Chairman, if I might, while we're talking about uh borough departments, I I'd also like to include a condition. That um in addition to the police and fire department, that the borough utilities and any. Requirements of our water department and our electric division um be included, um including. Any contributory cost for providing service um to the building.
Explain that to me a little bit.
If there are improvements required specifically for the electric, I I think water we're in pretty good shape for. But if there are improvements required to our electrical infrastructure to supply power to the to the building. That any of the attendant or appropriate cost attributable to those improvements be um be paid for by this developer.
Is that required for everybody? Because we shouldn't be imposing differential.
That that is.
Wherever the standard, they'd have to do it anyway, whether we say it or not. That's what I'm suggesting.
Right, there there were some improvements required uh on a on a current active project um to upgrade. Um the borough system to provide the required power. Um so I just wanted to be consistent with that application.
Yeah, my concern is not imposing separate differential requirements, whatever it is, because there was testimony here, I think, that I recall that uh. You may or may not need a transformer to be put in in the back corner there. And that's, you know, the borough, the electric is a borough utility. I'm aware of that.
Correct, correct.
I would think normally, the rule is if you need, you're creating the need, you pay for it. I mean, that's the normal rule, so. But on a broader level, I was gonna suggest compliance with. The comment memos from the engineer and from Mr. Stern. I don't know if there are any open comments or not. It's sort of standard that. To do that, Mr. Stern's not here to tell us uh that.
Well, I think I think if I recall, we were good on all of that, but if.
Yeah, I don't remember.
If something popped up that was missed, I would, I would think that the applicant is going to need to work that out. With our experts.
Yeah, they have complied with the comments from my memorandum as far as.
Okay.
A plan revisions. We have not received um a full set of revised plans at this point, but that would be, you know, for resolution compliance. Both my memo, traffic memo, and a planning memo.
Yeah, now that's that's standard stuff.
That's standard.
Boilerplate, but we probably should put it in. That's all I'm suggesting. If there's a problem comes up, it'll get worked out, I'm sure.
Yeah, and as we've done with other significant variances where we've had Mr. Stern. As our planner, he he uh typically will come in at the very end of the application and do a compliance check to make sure that everything was actually done.
Yeah, and usually to do that, you require an ASBIL survey when it's done to, so you can look at it and see that everything matches.
Yeah, and that's that's nothing more than just making sure that when you go for a CO, everything that you said you did, you actually did.
Yeah, I don't know. The most construction permits require that anyway, so, but we'll put it in.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anything else off the top of my head. Is there any stormwater issue, Dennis?
Uh no, the the improvements have been um been reviewed, and um there was additional stormwater management included in the. On lock twenty-four um in addition to the seepage pits originally proposed, so that has been addressed. Um there there was one thing that I believe was brought up by one of the board members, actually, Mr. Chairman, I think by you regarding. And what I'll call an off-track improvement on crosswalks on Lincoln Place, and that the applicant has agreed to provide. Um the appropriate signage package for um the existing crosswalks, which is a nice contributory um improvement and, you know, additional improvement.
Now, now, do we have a set of final revised revised plans? I know there's some things to have been.
No.
Changed along the way.
We do not have a a complete final set.
I'll flag that too. Final set of revised plans reflecting agreed upon changes. Okay.
So, Mr. Wilson, are you good with the conditions that we talked about? Okay. All right, so is there anything else, Gary? Because what we'll do is move for a vote.
Yeah, I don't think so. Nothing comes into my head, so.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve this application with the conditions we've discussed?
I'm moved.
Diane, okay, two seconds.
Second.
Roger, second. Make it a roll call.
Mr. Diania?
Yes.
Ms. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Dr. Paceal?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Ms. Taratelli?
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations, uh Mr. Wilson and company. Um you have a successful application. It's been approved. Wish you luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals. We greatly appreciate it and uh your confidence in this project, and it will be something that you're proud of.
And then, since the next meeting is only two weeks away, I won't have a resolution time, because I want to share with Mr. Wilson for comments anyway, but. And as we heard earlier, uh the August meeting may be changed, but for now, assume. We'll determine that at the July meeting, and so whatever the meeting after that is, whenever it is, that'll be the target for resolution.
And uh I would just like to say, you did a very, you and your your team did a very professional job, um so we appreciate that. Also, I'd like to say, Mr. Simon, we appreciate your participation as well. A very professional job. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to participate, and thank you to the board and to the applicant as well for your courtesy throughout this matter. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, uh one or two other things is, um I, even though Mr. Stern is not here. Um I I want to say in connection with Mr. Stern and also Mr. Harrington. Um and also Fran, great job, and Gary, terrific job on this. It was quite a lift, and I appreciate all that you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, so so that's that. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight? I don't think so, right?
No, our next, the next meeting is the second Thursday in July, whatever that date is, and we have a full plate, and as I said at the beginning, we'll go from there.
The eighth. It's July eighth.
Okay.
July eighth. Okay, and then uh just lastly, I thank you to all the board members. This was. Quite a lot of work and a lot of focus, and I appreciate everything you guys went through doubling up on these meetings for the last six, five or six months. So uh it's a good thing, though. I think uh there'll be, this will be a great thing for Madison, so thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe.
So um can I get a motion to adjourn? We got only half a night tonight. It's so early.
It's a move.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of uh. This meeting is adjourned.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Bye-bye.